Good evening and welcome to the Monmouth City Council meeting for Tuesday, December the 4th. And I'd like to call the meeting to order. And roll call please, fellas.
Counselor Belz.
Here.
Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Sharma.
Here.
Counselor Silbernagle.
Here.
Mayor Milligan.
Here. Will you all please rise and join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That brings us to the consent calendar. And we have two items, the council meeting minutes from November 6th and the council work session minutes from November 6th.
Make a motion.
Second.
This has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Like sign. Alright, now those are passed. So, this last, what, week? Guess a little over a week. Monmouth had brought together the Making Spirits Bright program, which was to bring more emphasis to what we do, our businesses around the holiday time. And it was in conjunction with the tree lighting. It was really good to see how many people came together for this project. It was a collaboration between the city of Monmouth, Western Oregon University, the Monmouth Business Association, through the Chamber of Commerce, quite a few businesses, Windermere Real Estate, Main Street Ice Cream, Monmaire's Pedals and Vines, Washington Federal Credit Union, The Jim Bar and Grill, Howgan's Female Depot, Main Street Pub and Eatery, Yesty Beasty, Union 76 Station, and Fine Pickens. There were a lot of activities on Saturday, November 24th. And then, there was participation in the parade with some food vendors in Main Street Park the night of the 30th for the tree lighting. The cooperation in this was pretty amazing. I didn't realize how far it reached until I actually got to the event on Saturday, the 24th. It was interact. Kids through the rotary were actually out helping set things up and break things down and run the games. So, it ran the gamut of a lot of different organizations within the community that put on this. And then, I want to put a special thanks to Monmouth Power and Light employee, and I forget who it was, but for creating this over-the-street light right here in front of City Hall. Can you?
Bill Janest.
Okay. So, Bill's responsible for that. And I talked with Chuck, and hopefully over the next couple of years, there'll be more items like that show up for the holidays. And with that, I had the opportunity to introduce Mayor-elect Cease Kuntz to the Mayor's Breakfast. And then, we've got a regional Mayor's Coalition Dinner coming up a little later this month that she'll be attending with me to get acquainted with mayors around the region. And with that, I'll go to council reports. Counselor Belz?
So, I have two reports. The Traffic Safety Commission did not meet last night. That meeting was canceled. And then, the Library Board met last week. And the report is that they participated in the downtown Halloween Spooktacular. Said, once again, they had, it was very successful. They had 825 people counted at the library, which is wonderful. CCRLS will be purchasing a subscription to the Niche Academy, which is an electronic training resource. So, that has both a public side and a staff side. And people will be able to do all kinds of training, things like library-to-go, ebooks, and computer software programs. The library is partnering with the Senior Center to connect each of their patrons with the services that are available. So, the first offering will be an adult color-your-own-Christmas-card program at the library on December the 12th, that's a Wednesday, at 11:00 a.m. And this is for adults of all ages. And all the materials and snacks will be provided. And then, lastly, we are entering the season of giving. And so, the library is going to be a drop-off spot for the Monmouth Police Department for their participation in the Community Food Challenge. The library is hosting the Third Annual Casa Giving Tree as well. And they're accepting donations of new unwrapped gifts through December 13th of this year. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Alright, thanks. Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, I have two. The Historic Commission met on the 7th. And the big program that they're working on, and I'm really glad to see it, is they're trying to get a couple houses to come in and try to become historic figures within our city. And they have two people that are interested in it. A lot of work involved in it, and I hope it continues on, is what I hope. Because a lot of people on the Commission are really excited about it. And then, I think everything is pretty well set on the picture that's going to be put over by the amphitheater for the railroad sign that's going to go in there. I think there's just a few little details, and they'll be able to put that up along with Russ's help, you know, on that deal. That's pretty much the Historic Commission. On the Planning Commission, we had a representative from the state to come in and basically put on a display about what I want to say about how we can organize our rules and regulations better to help people that come here to apply for, to have building permits and zone changes and stuff. And that's basically what they are. And I think there was a grant available where they would come and help, so that was part of it. Rest of it was basically going over old things, trying to bring them up, learning process and everything else. Thank you.
And Counselor Schinkel?
The Parks and Recreation Board did not meet last month. They were still waiting for an update on the Parks Master Plan, so we'll be meeting this month, and we'll have an update.
Alright. Counselor Silbernagle?
Great, thank you. Monmouth Senior Advisory Board met on November 27th. We had a guest, I guess I'll call it a speaker, as well as just a conversation about how Western and the Senior Center can work a little closer together. Dr. Melissa Cannon was there, and she does a lot of stuff with aging, so she was working on some stuff with some students she had, as well as creating more ties there with the Senior Center. I also am guessing we will see rental changes for the facility that'll be in front of us in January. They're pretty much finished with that, it looked like. That concludes my report.
Alright. Counselor Sharma?
The Monmouth Tree Board elected not to meet as a board in November. However, on the 10th of November, there was a very successful tree planting event to commemorate Veterans Day. There were about a dozen international students from Western Oregon University who helped out. And there were about 12 trees, shade trees planted at Madrona Park, near the playground and near the front walkway, which will provide some good relief in the summer when it's very hot and sunny. The students then stayed afterwards to help with weeding and mulching there at the Arboretum. And we're very grateful to them. Thank you.
Counselor Carey?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the MINED Board met on November 29th. And I'd just like to acknowledge one of my, you know, one of the Monmouth representatives on the MINED Board, the distinguished-looking gentleman in the back with, you know, the No Shave November, David Ritchie, back there is a tremendous member of that Board, doesn't get a lot of recognition or face time, but is a valuable asset. A lot of good news coming out of the MINED at the moment. We've been talking, and I've been talking to you ad nauseam about this pond conversion, which is really the upgrade in technology that's going to be necessary for continued service. That is considerably ahead of schedule and considerably under budget. They may conclude that within, you know, a year in advance of the five-year projected timeframe that I believe they had anticipated. And if things, trend lines continue, maybe as much of, you know, beat budget by $700,000. So, that's really a good, a good deal. They've done a nice job with that. We're about, almost 1,700 actual conversions that have been done at this point, and they've got projections out for the remaining time on that. The Managed Wi-Fi Program that I've mentioned, that's rolled out about a year ago. They've got 300-plus customers, and that seems to be going fine. That's additional revenue for MINED. So, that's, again, running a bit ahead of what they thought it might have been. The Willamette Valley Fiber Project, that in Dallas, that expansion over there, I have mentioned before, and you might not have noted, but the city's been divided into 22 sections, sectors. And so, that's how they're going to attack the build-out of that over there. This is the infrastructure build-out. And they have either, well, they got 15 of those 22, either where they're actually getting fiber negron, or they've got it engineered. So, they're on schedule. The planning is going as they had anticipated. So, they expect to have, very likely, you know, someone onsite in Dallas by the end of the year, certainly the first of next year, for certain. And by the way, the reception's been quite good, that they've been over there. And that's been my sense, as well as I've talked with people over there. Finally, you know, because revenues are good, expenses are being managed, the projections right now, and these won't hold, but they're an indicator for the May Debt Service, that MINED would pay 87% of that obligation. The cities would be left with 17% of that. That would be roughly a $90,000 obligation for Monmouth, which is considerably down from, you know, the 400s that we used to be talking about. So, there's a lot of good things going on over there. The next meeting for the MINED Board is going to be December 12th at noon. And I believe, is that going to be at the Independent City Hall? I think so. I think that's what it's going to be. It's going to be, we're going to be discussing, beginning to talk about, you know, personnel and compensation issues and that sort of thing. So, there may be a bit of executive session there, but maybe not. But our next full meeting will be January 24th, 2019. And if there are no questions, that concludes my report.
Just a quick question. I understand the equipment failure has been solved, and everybody's back online now?
It's my understanding, yes. Yes. And that's, you know, we're at that sort of aging time, and so that's why there's some of these things being replaced, and that would reduce the incident of that. I'm not sure exactly what the genesis of this was, but we need to keep up with the technology.
Of us and the equipment?
Yes.
Yes.
And then, I just realized that I'd overlooked one thing in my mayor's report. We had an opening in the Planning Commission. Former Mayor John Oberst had applied for that, and I'm going to appoint him to that position, so I'm looking for the council's affirmation of that.
You need a motion?
Yes.
I'd move John Oberst to the Planning Commission.
Appointed to the-
Appointed to the-
Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
Alright. This has been moved and seconded to appoint John Oberst to the Planning Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, thanks. And now, we can move on to community announcements. Any activities?
There's a YMCA Christmas party and auction that's taking place on Friday night out at Greenville Barn, and I believe there's still seats available last time I checked. If anybody's interested.
The basketball season is underway at Central High School. The Lady Panthers, Central Panthers are 16 minutes into their game right now, and I'm hoping they've got a comfortable margin, but I can't guarantee it, because I'm not there.
Thanks for being here. And with that, we'll turn it over to City Manager's report. Scott?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, a couple of things. We had our town hall meeting last week, sparsely attended, but had a good discussion. Kind of covered similarities, citizen involvement, economic development, different things, so we'll just keep going with that. The City Hall Volunteer Hall assessment, so we get somebody out here to do those options. We got the contractor pretty much lined up. They're already looking at documents, and they're going to come out first part of January and do the walkthrough, get the initial kickoff meeting. And so, that'll be great to get going on that. The Economic Development Assessment that I tried to do didn't go too far. We didn't have a lot of participation, and it was all splotchy, so as you've noticed, you got a second notice to try again in January on that. A couple of construction items. Monmouth Power and Light Headquarters coming on really well. It's still scheduled for end of January. They got that target sitting there. And then, I think a miracle for many, the Carl's Jr. site is under construction. And I think we calculated that was, you know, more than 30 years it's been sitting there, so amazing. And then, the South Town Apartments, which will be right next to Monmouth Power and Light, those are also under construction, too. So, lots of big projects going.
Just a question or comment, and I know this won't happen until we have a new, sort of new council in place, but I'd like, I would suggest that we bring this concept of the town hall back, you know, to a work session and discuss that. Personally, I think it's a great idea, but I'm not so sure we might be better off with a very thin agenda with lots of open comment, so.
Yeah, I think we've talked about that, and that would probably make sense, even if you kind of mapped out just some key topics you'd like to address and say you want to do, whatever.
Anyway, I'd like, I'm hoping we can continue with that and maybe find a way to make it a little richer.
Yeah. Yep.
So, we have a presentation from the Police Department. Chief?
Hold up. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I'm going to bring up members of the Police Department. Apologize that we're going to have to kind of stand.
It's okay.
It's alright.
And then, I'd like to invite the Walker family out also. Join us. So, as you can see, this year, the Monmouth Police Department participated in No Shave November. That's why you see all the beard. I think they did a good job of participation this year. And just for those that don't know, No Shave November is a web-based nonprofit organization devoted to growing cancer awareness, raising funds to support cancer prevention, research, and education. The concept behind No Shave November, the goal of No Shave November is to grow awareness by embracing our hair, which may include letting it grow wild and free. Participants are to donate the money that they would typically spend on shaving and grooming, donate that money to education about cancer prevention, saving lives, and aiding those that are fighting the battle. And so, this was our first year that we participated. This is actually the 10th anniversary of No Shave November, the first year that we participated. And we all collectively got together, we donated the money that we saved, and we added a little bit to it. And tonight, we selected the Walker family. This is Helen and Ty, and their two daughters, Grace and Lucy. And we chose to donate $850 to Lucy with her ballot. And here you go. For No Shave November, Ristab. Alright, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have a presentation by the Midwill-Willamette Valley Council of Governments.
My name is John Saefstrom. I'm the Small Business Program Manager at the Council of Governments. And this is Jackie Frankie. She is a board member of the Council of Governments. And we're here to give Steve Milligan an award of appreciation for being on the Council of Governments Board. Who is the Council of Governments and what is the Council of Governments? The Council of Governments is an intergovernmental entity created by the local governments of Polk, Yamhill, and Marion Counties, as well as the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ron. We facilitate intergovernmental coordination, cooperation among those regional governments in our region, and we also can serve as a conduit for federal funding in our region in areas of small business lending, transportation, and economic development. Some of the activities that Steve's been involved with at the Council of Governments, and I'll just kind of give you a list of everything we do, but summarize it very briefly. The Council of Governments acts as a metropolitan planning organization that is responsible for allocating millions of federal dollars to transit, street, pedestrian, bike, and bridge improvements. Also, the Council of Governments is a designated economic development district that provides access to the member governments for federal economic development funds. Also, the Council of Government serves on the Governor's Regional Solutions Teams and supports the Regional Solutions Advisory Council. Also, we'll go on a little bit further here. The Midwill-Willamette Valley Area Commission on Transportation is an advisory board chartered by the Oregon Transportation Commission, and advises on all aspects of transportation, including development of statewide transportation improvement program, and determines how the transportation dollars are spent within our region. Also, this is kind of the part I'm involved in, and I could speak for quite a while on it, but I won't, is that we also administer the Small Business Loan Program, including we're an intermediary for the U.S. Small Business Administration, otherwise known as SBA, the Department of Agricultural Culture and Rural Development, the U.S. Department of Economic Development Administration, known as EDA, and we also provide funds through the State of Oregon's Business, Oregon Business Development Fund. Additionally, and I'm coming to the end of this, we also administer community block grant funds for housing rehabilitation, and right now, for the cities of Omsville, Aurora, Detroit, Gates, Jervis, Hubbard, Idana, Jefferson, Silverton, Staten, and Turner, along with Mount Angel and Woodburn, and some of the unincorporated areas of Marion County. And the COG also is an affiliate for the U.S. Census Bureau, providing expertise and assistance in the training for the next round of census. And with that, Jackie will go into further detail about Steve.
Well, I just wanted to make a couple of additional comments to what John has already said. COG also provides training and technical assistance to member governments. We provide regionally informed land use, informed land use planning services to 21 cities in the area. And among the services we provide our members is executive-level recruitments, background check services, executive-level evaluations, goal-setting facilitation, charter revisions, customized training, and new counselor orientation. And I must say, we do a lot of this partly because we have a new Executive Director, Sean O'Day. If you have not met him, he is exceptional, well-experienced, a lot of energy, and is really bringing more services to the COG that we want to offer to the jurisdictions. The COG exists because we have a creative, efficient, and intelligent Board of Directors. And that's why we're here today, is to really recognize one of the board members that has served on COG, and all of the things that John talked about and mentioned that we do is partly because of the involvement and the support and leadership from the Board of Directors. And Steve Milligan has been one of the COG Board of Directors for, since 2015. I was almost going to say 15 years, but since 2015. And we are really pleased to be here today to thank him for his leadership and his service to the COG. He also served on our Partnership Board, which helps allocate federal economic dollars to the region, and he did that since 2015 as well. And with a very, you probably know this, with a gentle approach and a kind demeanor, Steve has been a strong and reasonable voice for Polk County. We wish to honor Steve for his years of service to the COG and to the region with just a small token of appreciation.
Alright, thanks. Thanks. It's been an honor and pleasure to be on that board. How many members do we have on that board? Like 30 people? Because we're from all the different cities around Polk, Marion, and Yamhill Counties, and then a couple other, Schmeckada, San Luis Kaiser School District. So, it's quite a diverse board and really fun to work on. Let's see, so next, years of service presentation. This is the fun part. That's why everyone's here tonight, right? Recognize their coworkers and their family members that have made a huge contribution to the city. Where go? Most years to least years. Okay? Okay. So, first, Yolanda. Congratulations. This is in recognition of 30 years of service. Thank you. Yolanda began working for, working as a records clerk for Monmouth Police Department on August 18th, 1988. At that time, the Police Department was located in City Hall. Yolanda was the only employee with access to a computer in the Police Department at the time. She spent many hours typing reports that officers would dictate the previous day. The day-to-day operations have changed greatly over the years, mostly due to rapidly changing computer technology. Yolanda has provided, the record was promoted to records supervisor in 2000, overseeing one full-time and one part-time employee in addition to her records duties. In 2009, she took on even more duties and began serving as the department's evidence technician. She quickly reorganized the evidence room and made the evidence process much more efficient. Yolanda completed 28 years of service for the city in 2016 and attempted to retire. We quickly talked her out of it, however, and convinced her to remain employed on a part-time basis to serve as the part-time evidence technician. Let's see, what is it? She did give up the records piece. Yolanda has always taken pride in her job and is a perfectionist when it comes to accuracy. She's been, Oregon, she has, let's see. I don't know how to read this sentence. She has been recognized many times over the years during audits for her accuracy. She is well-liked by all employees and the citizens she serves. She is always willing to help anyone with a question. Thank you, Yolanda, for your dedication and commitment to the city of Monmouth. We appreciate your 30 years of service and wish you the best as you continue to serve our community. Yes?
Excuse me. Is it okay if we capture a photo with the award?
Sure.
Okay. My apologies, but I can't go home without a picture.
Okay.
You know what Sean will say. That's right.
Okay, okay.
Now I'm breaking your thing.
How's it going? Is that not working okay?
So, our next award is for Jana Stockner. And this is in recognition of 25 years of service. So, way back in August of 1993, Jana was hired by the city of Monmouth as an accounting clerk in the Finance Department. She was subsequently promoted to account technician and is the most senior member of our finance staff, having now been here for over 25 years. The only thing that- The only thing that, I should have read these before, because I'm not sure what the next part of the sentence is going to be. The only thing that outdates her in City Hall, besides the building, is the carpet. Because of her experience, she is a great resource for historical information and knowledge. Jana's customer service is exemplary, and many in the community know her and ask to see her when paying their bills. Jana's focus from the finance operations standpoint includes accounts payable, utility billing, cash receipts, and accounts receivable. She also assists with the annual audit. A conservative estimate is that Jana has processed around 36,000 checks to vendors and assisted in 1.5 million billing and payments on utility accounts in her 25 years in the city. That's a lot. Personal interests for Jana include time with her family, walking, home renovations, crafts, and most of all, her six grandchildren. The latest one just being under a year old now. Jana continues to be a great asset to the city, and her contribution is highly appreciated by the city customers and city employees alike. And our next honoree is Teri Alvarez. Hi, Teri.
Hi.
And this is in recognition for 15 years of service. So Teri Alvarez started at the library as a library assistant one on September 18, 2003. She was promoted to circulation supervisor in 2010, a role in which she excelled. Teri has a friendly face for patrons during the mornings at the circulation desk. She listens to patrons' recommendations for books, movies, and offers her own suggestions in return. Teri's forthright, firm, but friendly nature is a great asset in dealing with patrons' problems and problem patrons. Hopefully more patron problems than there are problem patrons. In addition to her circulation and supervisory duties, Teri creates book displays to promote authors and different subjects. She continually seeks to streamline methods and procedures. She recruits, hires, and trains the library's student workers from Oo, and she has been instrumental in training new staff over the past couple of years. Teri is the current chair of the city's safety committee. She is willing to take on new challenges and is always looking at ways to better serve our patrons. Whether she is checking out books, troubleshooting with staff, working to resolve a patron issue, or dealing with an unhappy patron, Teri is always cheerful and respectful. The library is fortunate to have Teri as in a leadership role, and we appreciate her dedication and all the years of service. Our next honoree is Honorable Judge McCann. This is 15 years of service. Judge McCann was formally hired as the city's municipal judge in January of 2003 after functioning as the judge pro temp for a brief period prior to that. The four days per week that he is not with us, he is in his 25th year as an attorney in his private practice in the Salem area, where he now primarily does legal work in the area of youth delinquency and dependencies related to Oregon Department of Human Services cases. This work promotes a unique perspective for Judge McCann in this courtroom. He is an empathetic listener who takes time to understand and provide instructions. He also so defendants feel heard and know that what has occurred and why. He has an easygoing disposition, yet he maintains control in the courtroom. He is regarded for his fair and balanced approach to each case, and it's not uncommon for him to extend a genuine handshake of complimentary praise to defendants who complete all required conditions. One particular area that has shown significant progress in recent years under Judge McCann's direction and of which he is especially proud is the mental health court program, which has produced excellent results for the community. The judge has stated that he appreciates very much the tremendous working relationship he has with the Monmouth Police Department and the amazing support he receives from the city's court clerk, Wendy. Personal interests for Judge McCann are primarily outdoor activities. He loves to ride his Harley-Davidson on long trips. In 2013, he did a coast-to-coast cross-country trip and has even driven up to Canada, including a south-to-north trip to Vancouver Island. He has another motorbike for dirt bike riding with his gang of guys and has enjoyed fly fishing with the same group of friends every spring since 1996. Judge McCann, you must have been young then. Judge McCann has done and continues to do a great job. The city is fortunate to have him as our municipal judge. So just, so you guys noticed, this is a Christmas ornament with Santa on a Harley. And this is for 15 years of service. For 15 years, Alan has brought to the city a diverse background of skills, talents that continue to be a real benefit to the Public Works Department. He specializes in what could be termed farm physics, the ability to analyze a situation and fabricate the tool or part necessary to get the job done. His welding or fabrication skills are often used by the department to keep equipment in the field and out of the repair shop. Alan is a leader, a dependable, hard-working, no-nonsense, get-the-job-done leader. Members of the Public Works Department often lean on Alan's experience when troubleshooting or planning for work projects. His commitment to making Monmouth a better place to live makes Alan a true asset to the city and our department. We're hoping for many more years with Alan as on the Public Works team. We're getting there. And next is Debbie Kunkel with the Monmouth Police Department. This is for 10 years of service. Just so you know, my wife works for Salem Police Department in records, so I get a handful of what records has to go through, so. No, you do a lot, so. Debbie began work as a part-time records clerk for the Monmouth Police Department on September 10, 2008. Just shy of two years later, in June of 2010, she began working full-time as a police records clerk. She served in the capacity until September 2016, when she was promoted to her current position as police records supervisor. Debbie's ability to multitask, her excellent memory, and her dedication to accuracy make her an outstanding asset to the police department. She performs numerous functions every day, including answering the phone, greeting the public in front of the counter, at the front counter, transferring calls to officers, completing the proper data entry on all police reports, distributing reports to various courts and outside agencies, filing reports, entering citations, conducting records checks, entering warrants, and purging records. These job duties are just an example of some of what Debbie may work on during a typical day. Debbie is very pleasant and well-liked by her coworkers and the public. She does a great job making sure the day-to-day operations in the records department are running smoothly. Debbie, thank you for your dedication and commitment to the city of Monmouth. We appreciate your 10 years of service and wish you the best as you continue to serve the community. And 10 years is usually a jacket or a sweater?
Yes.
And next is Carrie Casperick. Did I pronounce that right?
No.
Okay.
No one ever does.
I knew I was going to, I knew I was going to. I've heard your name several times, but.
Yeah.
So do you want to pronounce it for us?
Casperick.
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 All right, thank you. Sorry for that.
No problem. It's phonetically correct the way you say it.
And this is for five years of service. As a youth services librarian, Carrie deals with any and everything child-related at the library, from collection management to programming. For kids from birth through high school, Carrie is on it. She orders and then catalogs materials for the juvenile and youth adult collections. She de-selects materials to maintain a useful, relevant, and interesting collection. She plans, promotes, prepares, and produces all youth programming. She provides outreach services promoting the library and the importance of every literacy, of early literacy. I could have used some of that. Carrie continues to create and building relationships and partnerships with local and regional groups. Carrie provides high-quality, relevant, and fun programming for our local children. A couple of years ago, she had an idea about partnering with the Central High School to get teams involved in summer reading. From that, the CHS Student Athletic, Athlete Ambassador Program started. Several athletic teams volunteered throughout the summer to help out at various summer reading programs. The result of the first year was phenomenal. Approximately 120 CHS Student Athletes Ambassadors helped out. It was great for the youth, for the younger kids to hang out with the older kids. It was also very positive for the teens to help with the little kids. In addition to her regular duties, Carrie has taken on the bolt of working at the NASA My Library Five-Year Grant Program, providing quality feedback to the project's creators, excellent STEM-related programming to local children, and has attended webinars, learning about STEM opportunities, as well as sharing STEM programming she has done. Recently, Carrie was selected as the Association for Library Service to Children, a committee of the American Library Association, to be a mentor. Carrie has been paired up with an early-career youth services librarian to provide feedback, support, and resources. A great honor for her. Carrie is a valued member of the library team, and to the little kids in our community, she's a rock star.
Thank you very much.
Huh? Not here. This is five years of recognition. Marty came to work for the city of Monmouth in December of 2013. He was hired as the Public Works Operations Manager. In December 2017, Marty moved into the project coordinator position for the department. In this position, Marty oversees capital improvement projects and new construction. Marty has his engineering degree and is also certified as a water and wastewater operator in the state of Oregon. Marty has raised eight wonderful children and has 10 grandchildren and counting. Monmouth Public Works appreciates the hard work that Marty has given to the community over the past five years. All right. What you got to look forward to, Steve? Next year, there's only two.
Really?
Yeah. These are the, this is the best part, though, is getting to recognize the employees, because so many of the times they're hardworking and we don't get to see their faces on a regular
They will, I know. Stay here for.
Yeah, that's true. All right. So, back to business. At this time, we're going to do citizen comments. It is reserved for citizens to comment on items that are not on the agenda. A maximum of three minutes per item, please. Is there anyone who'd wish to address the council at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the business agenda. And this is budget resolution transfer, and I believe this is for Finance Director Shinnard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. So you have before you a memo that outlines, as I've pointed out at the last several meetings, now the auditors are asking that when we become aware of a situation where we will exceed appropriations, that we not wait till the end of the year, we bring it forward as quickly as we can as it happens. And so we had two situations for system development charge refunds, which don't happen very often. So we have adopted appropriations that are sort of a nominal level of $1,000 in anticipation that we won't have refunds. Typically, what happens is if you have a large project near the end of the year, then that can cause a situation where a recalculation comes into play and then the developer gets a refund, and that's what happened this time. So what we're asking for is, we don't anticipate another one like this. We had two large projects already this year that we, the South Town Apartments that you know about in Carl's Jr., that we don't anticipate having refunds on those, but we wanted to have a buffer so we don't have to come back to you necessarily again right away or until the end of the year if that should occur again. And we do have some capacity in our capital outlay because we will not be accomplishing all the projects that we had initially thought we would. So we're asking for $10,000 in the sewer SDC fund and the water SDC fund to be transferred from capital appropriations to cover the expenditures which have already been made. And with that, I'll welcome any questions.
And this would be resolution number 1876.
So we had those refunds in both of those areas, is that correct?
Correct. Those two, those SDT funds, exactly.
Same project.
Same project, same, yeah.
Byrne?
Is this something that happens frequently? Do we need to look at that $1,000 number and maybe make an adjustment there?
That's exactly what I've done with this. It doesn't happen frequently, and we don't anticipate it happening again, but what I'd like to do in future years, you'll remember that for the operating funds, we went to a departmental appropriation level, and for situations like this where it goes between two different categories. For the SDC funds, I left them at the category level with the plan of talking to the local budget law folks about the possibility of budgeting that at the department level as well. And that is my plan for 1920, now that I know that it can be done. And so I don't anticipate, yeah, in 1920, I'm going to work with Russ to determine what a good amount is for the entire fund as of the Public Works Department and not try and guess $1,000 and then be wrong.
This has already been paid, you said?
Correct, yeah.
It's just a catch-up.
It is a catch-up. It is a catch-up, and normally, we will try to come to you before we're actually catching up because the problem was that the timing of this was such that we had to pay the developer, and the next meeting was now, so...
Any other questions? So again, this is Resolution 1876, a resolution approving a transfer for the budget year 2018-2019 and directing the Finance Director to make appropriate entries. We have a motion. Is that a... Appropriate motion right there to say, you know, as you said?
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
So moved. That's the better term. Has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none?
Counselor Silvernagle.
Aye.
Counselor Belts.
Aye.
Counselor Schinkel.
Yes.
Counselor Sharmer.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
All right, so now we'll move on to the second item, and this is a canvas of the votes from the November election, and I believe this is Recorder Bowman's.
Mayor and council, an election was held on November 6, 2018. The ballot contained candidates for mayor and three council positions. Monmouth City Charter requires the canvas be read into the record. The vote canvas is as followed. For mayor of City of Monmouth, Cecilia Kuntz, 1,925 votes. Kevin Chambers, 1,206. Cecilia Kuntz is elected as mayor for a two-year term. For City Councilor of City of Monmouth, Roxanne Belts received 1,772 votes. Chris Lopez, 1,354. John Carey, 1,350. Stephen Howard, 1,345. Steve Milligan, 1,189. And Royal Johnson, 936. Roxanne Belts, Chris Lopez, and John Carey are elected to four-year terms as City Councilors.
All right, thank you. And that brings us to counselor comments.
Yeah, I have just a concern. I had mentioned at a previous meeting that I would like to see us establish some sort of a protocol or policy for dealing with members of the public who write to us. And over the last week or two, we've received, as counselors, emails from people that require clicking on a link inside the email, and that made me very nervous. And so I would like to add that to our discussion about how we respond to communication from the public.
Okay. And who... Can you say who that person was that sent one with links?
I think there were three. One was about emergency preparedness. Another was something called... The sender was somebody named Missing the Ocean. And then there was another one from someone named Stephanie Volin. And I think we've had an issue in the past where someone sent some sort of link and it went through the entire Polk County, going into everybody's email addresses and sending them spam, that sort of thing. So I think it would be a good idea to have some sort of way of responding to those emails.
Okay.
I think it might be appropriate then to add some sort of IT training for council as far as... We get that at my office all the time. What do you click on? What do you not click on? It'd probably be appropriate for us to add that into our training. Thank you.
Then Royal.
Yeah, I didn't bring it up earlier. It was unmanaged because we had all these people here for you. You said that one of the emails you sent out to us was that the committee approved the architectural rough design, you know, the company to pick from. Who was the committee?
The staff.
The staff only?
The representatives of the City Hall complex.
So if you picked this person, are they the architect for the program then? Or is that just...
No, just for this face.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
I'd just like to thank Royal and Steve for all their service with the city. It's been a pleasure working with you and look forward to working with you on different projects. And Steve's done a pretty good job despite... This is not an easy group to lead sometimes, and so just appreciate your service and Royal's service.
Thank you. Now, hope to be able to help the city serve on some of their committees down the road.
Did you have some suggestion?
I would echo Byron's comments on both Royal and Steve. And Steve, very nice recognition. I'm glad they came and recognized the council governments. That was nice and appropriate. I would echo your comments on Making Spirits Bright. I thought that was a good event for the first time. I think now that they've proven that it can work, and I think that it'll expand and be better, you know, in future years, that was a real nice start and a nice collaboration with all of the groups, you know, the Monmouth Business Association, the university, the city, and then all the sponsors was good. So it was a good deal all the way around, good start.
There actually were at least one or maybe two church groups that were also involved in that as well. So it was a really cross-the-community collaboration. I don't think if there's anything else that I had in my... Had in my mayor's report that I forgot to mention.
While we're here, I will acknowledge Marilyn Morton, independent city council member. We appreciate her coming here for training.
All right. With that, I'm gonna read the script for us to go into executive session. After I read that, we'll recess the regular meeting to go to the work session. When we're finished with the work session and adjourn that, we'll come back to regular session, of which we'll do the executive session. So if I say members of the audience need to leave the room, that's not now, that'll be after our work session. So, script to announce the start of executive session, December 4, 2018. The City Council will now meet in executive session for the purpose of discussing performance evaluation of public officers and employees. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192.6602I, Performance Evaluation of Public Officers and Employees, which allows the council to meet in executive session. Designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. It is not anticipated that action will be taken this evening after returning from executive session. So with that...
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I just wanted to acknowledge that this is Lee Weiss last night as being our video director. We'll have a new one starting in January. I think he's done a great job.
Yeah, thank you for coming here. Thank you for your work.
So with that, I'm looking for a motion to recess the regular meeting to go into work session.
So moved.
Has been moved and seconded to recess, go into work session. All in favor? If I was saying aye?
Aye.
And anyone opposed? All right. We can go into the back table for work session.